Called to order, the Town Superior Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, May 20th, 2014. Phil's from Colorado, please.
Sheriff, Sherifferson Quinn Folsom.
Here.
Vice Sherifferson Bob McCool.
Here.
Commissioners Rita Dozel.
Here.
Joanne Eaton. Paul Sardine here. Bob Malmarts.
Here.
Michelle Redmester. Tom Ricker. Jim Sawtell.
Here.
Jenny Lance Cross. Platter Fred Fox.
Here.
Public comment on consent agenda or non-agenda items? Anyone wish to make any comments? Seeing none. Item number four is consent agenda approval of the April 15th, 2014 minutes. Anyone have any comments or do we have a motion to approve?
I have a comment about page five. And on page five, it talks about the buffer zones and the 200-foot buffer zone as well as 50-foot buffer zone. We had quite a bit of discussion about that, more than what's reflected in here, and it almost makes it sound as if, or presented as if it's that the 50-foot buffer zone is already, has a precedent for roadway built in it, and that isn't true, that's not the way I understand it. So I would like this to be either amended, you know, because that was what was said by, um, by Mr. Bray, and I don't think we should have what he says as our official minutes. Do you see that there, fellas? Okay.
I would concur. I think it should, needs to be clear that it's unclear.
And there was quite a bit more discussion at the town board meeting following our April 15th meeting, which did not align with this, this language either. So I think we should either clear that up or otherwise take it out, you know? I don't believe this represents our discussion yet.
I can listen to it again.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone have anything else? Motion to approve with those changes, or do you want to hold it until?
I, I think a motion to approve with the changes, but I want to make sure that all language is in the changes. The planning commission, when I say our, our commission's language, and not the president's language.
Understood.
Okay. Thank you.
With that, motion. Second. Any motion?
Oh, no. Sorry, I thought of a motion. I have a motion, quick minutes, with the correction to represent what was discussed by the planning commission here regarding the residential buffers of 250 feet.
Okay. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Dozel, second by Commissioner McCool. All is in favor? Unanimous except for Commissioner Malmarts, who is, no, he's absent. Okay. Next, we have...
Can I make one more comment? I'm sorry, I didn't. This is just a comment, at the end, when we say when we adjourn, I like to have the time when we adjourn. Because I think it gives an idea of people, if they want to listen to the recording, they can see how long it is, and maybe kind of scan, or think about, will this discussion that I'm looking for be in the middle of the four-hour tape or at the end? So is it, is it appropriate or okay? Can we just say adjourned at 9:42 or 10:11:99 or whatever?
Okay.
Or get as close as we can get it? Yeah, you know, like 11:30 or 9:30. I don't care about the exact minute. It's more of a, because we had quite a discussion at this meeting, good discussion. And when you look at the minutes, you kind of go five or six pages. I know it's horrible writing minutes, and, and the units are good. It's just that I think that people need to recognize there was a lot more that happened than just four, zero, few pages.
Well, even some timestamps, if, if it were possible to have a timestamp or two in the middle of the minutes might be useful if that, if that could be done. If there was certain agenda, I mean, had agenda items, maybe.
Yeah.
If there was multiple agenda items.
I think people are pretty able to go through and say, okay, this looks like it's about the middle, so I'll kind of fast forward to the center of the discussion. That would be, I think that would be helpful.
Okay. Yep, good suggestion.
Okay. Thank you.
Item number five, open public hearing and continue to the June 3rd, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. So open the public hearing for the adoption of resolutions recommending to the Board of Trustees to approve the following. Final plan for Discovery Office Park, Superior Town Center combined, case number SUB-FP-2014-1. Final development plan for Discovery Office Park in case number FDP-2014-1. Item C, final plan number two for Superior Town Center in case number SUB-FP-2014-2. And item number D, final development plan phase two for Superior Town Center in case number FDP-2014-2. Staff, want to make any comments about our move to continue this?
We need to continue to date certain, because the board continues this discussion of these things, and we need to push off the next set of documents until after that their hearing is finished, which is, I believe, on the, what, the 20...
I think that's scheduled for May 27th.
27th.
Tonight.
Right. So this one is, our normal meeting is the, would be the 3rd of June. We would recommend that it be the 10th of June, but you need, as a planning commission, to try to figure out whether or not you would have a quorum on the 10th.
Okay.
Because that would be a special meeting.
It would also be a special meeting.
I believe from emails that have circulated internally, we do have, we do have a quorum.
On the 10th of June.
Available for the 10th of June. So that would be, that'd be my preference, and I think the preference of those of us that are here. So do we have a motion to continue this public hearing to June 10th, or something?
Do we need to make a motion to have a special meeting? A special meeting first? No? Okay. So I make a motion that we continue this public comment and hold it open until?
Public hearing.
Public hearing, until the June 10th special meeting for the planning commission.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Dozel.
At 7:00 PM.
At 7:00 PM, June 10th, 7:00 PM. Motion by Commissioner Dozel. Second, second, second by Commissioner Malmarts. All is in favor? Unanimous? Item number six is discussion and recommendation of street names for the Superior Town Center. Looks like Lisa has a presentation.
Lisa, what do you, Town Staff? I will be brief. Essentially, within your staff report, you provided a brief discussion of how this street naming map has been compiled. Essentially, a street naming task force was identified, and consisted of representatives from Ranch Capital, the Historic Commission, different town residents. We've got a list of those names if you should be interested. They came up with the following goals for determining street, recommended street names. That, for one, it maintained continuity with current street names in town, that it would incorporate Superior history, to name appropriate streets to indicate activity in the area, and to use street names that future residents and businesses would find desirable as their After that point, they came up with essentially four categories for proposed street names. Use of historical names that represent significant women in the history of the town, the use of names that connect or extend from existing street names, use of names that reflect area history, and use of names that would be widely used and recognized as uniquely relating to the Superior Town Center. And so what the planning commission's role is for this evening is just to review and comment on these street names. We would love to hear your feedback. We can go through the list. We have some staff kind of observations or suggestions as far as things to consider, but we can open it up with yours. Is that PowerPoint crashed here? I'm sorry. I was just going to put the street name map up. One thing to note, Promenade Drive, as you could see, is it extends down into Village Green. The two streets on either side of the Village Green are not labeled, but those would be a continuation of Promenade Drive.
Can you make that larger?
Can I make it larger? No, it's fine. Let me zoom in on it. It's, um... Go ahead, and you can start discussing while I...
Okay. Talk amongst yourselves. Who'd like to kick off our discussion? Commissioner Dozel?
Okay. Um, I have, I wrote this out because it's kind of hard to follow, so wait, so you want this side down, that way? And then pass this over to the President, please?
Sure.
So I looked at the map that was provided, and I want to first sincerely thank the Historical Committee and the Street Naming Task Force, because I think it was an excellent thing that they did to provide their time and then consideration for these more historically suitable names for the Town Superior and for the Superior Town Center. So here's some comments that I have when I looked at it, and for consideration that we might want to think about. Of course, the street names that would stay as proposed would be Marshall Road, because that exists, Main Street, Superior Drive, which is on the front of the, on the west side, along the front, parallel with McCaslin, Old Railway, I think that's an appropriate name too for that street, because it's basically on the old railway bed. Promenade Drive, I think that is an excellent description coming from Town Center up to Street 4. I like, and I love the idea of Emmeline Way, and I think that's a great name to have there. Coal Creek Way, which is along Coal Creek Drive, I'm sorry, Coal Creek itself, the Coal Creek open space, and Discovery Parkway up to Street 5. And then Superior Way is not shown on this, but that I believe is what's called in front of the existing businesses now, a little bit of street that is over there. We need to include Campus Drive connection to Street 7, because we've said that, that we asked that to be included in there. And then I would think that Street 7, which is now named possibly Trail Way, just is an extension of Campus Drive. So it becomes Campus Drive or Kite Route Way, but this may cause some confusion for getting to Campus Drive across 36, when people want to find Campus Drive to go to school in Monarch. So I would propose that we consider recommending that it stayed Campus Drive. Avenue C, which is now named Kite Route Drive, becomes Coal Creek Drive as it's extended along 36, as was discussed in the last board meeting, town board meeting. And, and then also Street 8 remains as Emmeline, but will connect down then around to, to Avenue C, or, and connects to Avenue C, comes up and comes, connects to Avenue C. Avenue C, which has been named Coal Creek Drive or Promenade Drive in two different versions of the document that I've seen, is an extension then of Emmeline Way. So Emmeline Way will curve down from Coal Creek Drive around and along where it's now termed Promenade there, up to the Village Green. Avenue C, north of Boulder Valley Heights, now we're looking back at what's called Recreation Drive at the moment, is really an extension of Coal Creek Drive, which would become the name for Avenue C. Street 5, which is Discovery Parkway, I would think would be great if we could name it something like Long's View Drive East, because it's one-way east, and then, and we're really at the top highest point where you can look out to Long's Peak. And then Street 4, which is Village Green Way, could become Long's View Drive West, because it's one-way, the opposite direction. Street 6, which is named Josephine Way now, I am proposing in kind of a fun nod to two more prominent Georges in Superior, and George Minke being one, and George Cutler being the other, could become Georges Way. Josephine Way, Josephine Street is a very prominent street in Denver, in Cherry Creek, and people will be very confused, I think, I mean, if you start talking about Josephine, Josephine is a very prominent street at Cherry Creek in Denver. So I, I love the idea of using the name Josephine, but I think it would be too much of a conflict with the Denver Cherry Creek Street. And then finally, access to Superior Cemetery. We see no way to access the Superior Cemetery. I don't know if that'll be a street or a pathway or what, but we had access and we had a parking lot up there, but now since the underpass has been filled in, we have to have a way to access the cemetery. And there is a possibility, the steep wall on the northwest side is inaccessible from that side. The, on the southwest and south side, it's also pretty steep, and there's a discussion about possible retaining while terracing. But a possible point of access for the cemetery may be the proposed turnaround for irrigation access. It's in FDP 1B, page 5 of 7, NC1.7. However, this proposed irrigation access road has no access or connection at the north end, so we'll have to figure out how we might be able to, you know, connect that some way. It terminates behind the lift station. So we need to plan for and include appropriate access to the cemetery. Those are some things that, as I looked at it, I was trying to maintain, again, some of the connections, incorporate some of the discussions that we've had here, as well as, that I've heard at the public meetings with the town board of trustees. And I think that it adds a few more names that mean something more specifically to where we're situated at here in Superior, and also the streets there are historically important to the Town of Superior. Those are just some of my thoughts for consideration.
Okay. Who else would like to jump in? Phil's?
Yeah, I have a couple. First of all, Emmeline. As I was looking in the original history book, it was spelled E-M-M-A-L-I-N-E. I don't know where this spelling, oh, this spelling actually came from the Lost History Book. So I don't know which is correct, and I don't know how we find that out, but I would like to find out if we use that name, if we find out the correct spelling of it. Also, if we're going to use history names, Emmeline Hake, I would rather use Hake, because when you look at the old documents, that's what you see. You don't see Emmeline, you see Charles Hake. So I would suggest one of the streets, I don't care which, has Hake.
How is that pronounced, or spelled? I'm sorry.
Hake.
Okay. Thank you.
Superior Way, I believe that is called Superior Plaza Way.
Okay.
And that is just for that short street that goes in there, because that development is called Superior Plaza.
Okay.
So, just for clarification on that one.
Are you talking about the street that would come off of Marshall and go north?
What's the existing in Bricks Plaza and Superior, I guess.
Is that what you're talking about?
That's what I'm talking about, correct. Thank you.
Called Superior.
Plaza Way.
But that's not...
It's not shown on this document, but we need to, I think we should make sure we note it, note it somewhere, that that's also another Superior...
Yeah.
Something.
So having all those Superior Plaza, Superior, I don't know what those others are.
Superior Drive.
Drive.
Yeah.
Yeah. That, that's a concern of mine, too, is people be looking at the wrong place for the wrong street.
Two similar of names. Okay. Okay. So the street names of the, I mean, we're trying to get, the, the teams tend to focus everything on that, we're naming our streets, and so the point of Emmeline and Josephine were to recognize some of the important women in Superior. So I think it's very important to maintain that. I think that's what the committee's been, has, has proposed. So to change that immediately, the last name, I mean, that, 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 Josephine and Emmeline kind of lose context if people don't use their names. So I'm certainly in favor of doing that. As far as anything else goes, I'm kind of open to what the committee decides to do.
Do you have any concern about Josephine being so prominent in Denver?
I come from Atlanta, where there's 47 streets named Peach Trees.
But they're all kind of round each other.
Oh, no, they're all...
That's all.
No.
Pinckel and...
Yeah, I mean, I think there are mixed street names across towns in the state, so... No, I'm not terribly concerned with that.
Okay.
Okay, Joe?
I think they're fine. We don't really have any strong opinions one way or the other. Probably the only person around here doesn't have to either Josephine or Emmeline are, but it's okay, I can find out. I agree with the fellows, let's get the spelling, let's make sure we know. That's a good way to spell it, Emmeline.
It appears that if you look at the upper, just the northwest corner, we have the office, and it's, it's, we're creating, we're doing our recreation drive. If we took that, started up on the other, and followed that all the way, sounded like Recreation Avenue, so Kite and Emmeline, then I think that kind of a continuing, a good motion of the moment. So, and at the bottom, we had Core, Coal Creek, I think that's carrying, now, shouldn't, can I approach this thing? I don't mind at all, I'm kind of, I have one of my tools on my hand. Okay, if we start up here, and draw all the way down here, this whole exterior road, that could be hypothetically Coal Creek, but then we have the lead Coal Creek down here to there, and even this stretch over here, which I think is in the buffers over, that has a contention point in the grounds. But for me, I just like the idea of having one, 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 just being circling around that, so, as opposed to having three different names.
Could that just be Promenade, though? Just couldn't Promenade just...
Promenade, yeah, Promenade comes in sort of one side, starts up again at the other, and then picks it up again. I'm frustrated with things like that. It used to color, but it was another, any of the street that changed its names to be advertised.
Why did it change its direction?
Yeah. Why did it change its direction? It's plenty confusing to change names, but I would prefer one name from one side, but that could be Coal Creek Drive, or whatever we need to do, as opposed to two different names.
And I didn't realize that that said Creekview Way. My printout was so tiny, I thought it said Coal Creek Way up there, so I apologize for that. I thought that said Coal Creek Way, Creekview Way, not that it...
Right.
You know? Six of one, half billion of the other.
Probably need to be careful about redesigning street connections. I mean, I think our main thing here is probably naming, but...
I understand, yeah. It's a, it's a, it's a scope of discussion.
And I'm not a can of worms.
Well, these are only proposed down here at the bottom anyway, because that's not part of the plan of plan, so...
Okay. I think I'm the only one that hasn't commented. My comments would be that Discovery Parkway, I, I think it makes sense to name that Discovery Parkway, because it connects to a known entity that's, that is in existence now. So I think to have a street name that ties into an existing development, I think that makes sense. And Trail Way doesn't really excite me. I don't know if there's another...
There's Campus Drive connection there. That would be where Campus Drive connects. So the question is, if you wanted to call it Campus Drive or some other road, once it gets, street, once it gets over the highway.
I think this is Campus Drive.
Personally, I don't think that will happen in our lifetime, but...
Well, I have a clarification on that. Actually, even in Lewisville, there's some discontinuity on the east side of 88 Street, it's Campus Drive. On the west side of 88 Street, as it approaches the hospital, it's Health Park Drive.
Yes.
So there's a bit of discontinuity on that street named Genoville.
Okay. I guess I don't have, I, you know, whether it's called campus or trail or something else, I don't have any real strong feelings, but just Trail Way didn't, didn't do much for me. I like Bob Malmarts' comment about making this stretch one name. I would be in favor of that. I think that, just from a simplicity standpoint, I think that makes sense, although down here, that's really not Recreation, whereas this is, and that's why they named it that. Other than that, I'm mostly okay with the suggestions presented here.
I'm mildly concerned about, and it seems to me anywhere you've got an intersection, you've got to really think hard about whether you're going to continue a road name through a, through a turn.
That's true.
I, I, you know, I, I, I can see Promenade, because these will obviously be labeled Promenade, but anywhere where we're doing an intersection, it almost seems like you have to change street names. This, this even bothers me a little bit, because we have different street names here and here and here, then Discovery Parkway, then we have a turn, and, I don't know, I mean, I guess you could argue, any place, this would sort of be okay, but it almost seems like Discovery Parkway ends, you know? But, yeah, that doesn't bother me as much as trying to take an intersection like this and, you know, try to continue the street name. And this, if, if this, I, no, I don't know, if this, it's hard to tell whether this is a curve or a clear, hard right up here. I, I, you know, if we're going to do this down here, you know, do you get this same street name, you know, all the way across here? I, yeah, I'm struggling a little bit with intersections, you know, so we don't confuse people.
I think if it's a, if it's a street shot without a clear 90-degree, you know, where you might have lights or some other kind of traffic, like that Creekview Way over to Avenue C there, that, or what is that called? What is it called on that? Avenue C, yeah, that's called Avenue C.
Which one is?
Recreation, that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's all called. And then that street along the, is... Street 1 is now Creekview Way, is labeled Street 1 on the documents, and then Avenue C is what's now termed their Recreation Avenue, and all the way up around to Kite Route Drive. So I think it was intended that that was one, I mean, you know, the intent is one thing, but the actual reality will probably be something else. That, that's an easy curve, at Creekview Way, the way it's proposed there.
Up here.
Yeah, presented there. So I wouldn't have a problem with that being a similar, especially then, you know, this brings to mind that when somebody's trying to find the Boulder Valley Heights in indoor sports, if they can come into, on Marshall Road and intercept whatever the street is in front of Boulder Valley Heights as a continuation across Creekview Way, that would be a good thing, I would think. So you're coming into Marshall Road and you go, oh my, here's whatever it is that I'm trying to find, that the Boulder Valley Heights and indoor sports has, as their address. Instead of, as Bob was saying, you have so many confusing directions and things you don't know, so it would be good, I think, to be able to have that Creekview Way and what's termed Recreation Drive up there, the same street name, whatever it's going to be.
Okay. I would, I would agree with that. I think that's, that makes sense. We have some members of the public here. Would anyone like to make any public comments on street names? names? Go ahead, please. Yes, come to the mic. Introduce yourselves.
Carrie Nash, five forty Campbell Way, Superior. I was part of the team that helped come up with names and all your points are valid. You know, we went through that as well. Do you call that one name all the way through, even though you're going to have residential in here and calling it?
The mic.
Calling it Recreation Drive.
Yes.
So, I mean, the points are the same. We went through all those iterations. Does it turn? Do you keep it the same way? And I'm sorry that I missed the first part of the meeting about, some of the meaning behind some of the names on Kite Route Drive versus maybe, you know, Recreation Drive. I, I do like Recreation Drive in front of the Recreation Area. And again, if it were to carry all the way around, that's fine. It's just that you aren't going to have residential areas over here. You know, so your points are well taken. But we've, we had three meetings, three to four meetings, and went through a lot of different names. You know, you look up there like, oh, I have different ideas. But, you know, it's just, it all kind of came together and this is what we came up with. So just, I wanted to speak to the point of the Recreation Drive.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else?
Karen Geiger, five three five South Snowman Circle. Someone to reiterate, I was on the committee as well. We spent four meetings, but there were hours of people bringing ideas in, going through mining names, spurred names, tree names. And we tried very much not to, you know, replicate what's already in the area in terms of the eight oh two seven, Lewisville, et cetera. So I, I can, I agree with what Carrie said, is that down here, you have a problem because it's not recreation. And yet that does, in front of the ranch, Boulder Valley Access, does, does replicate what that is. But it's, everybody's going to have their own ideas. We just felt that we had tried to put the best of everything together, keeping in mind what was already in the eight zero zero two seven. And I think sometimes we can overthink it because if you, if you go to other towns, do you really think about, well, that street shouldn't be named this, or that shouldn't run into that? It might be something that we might be overthinking. I mean, to, to put too much, not to discount it, but to overthink about with GPS and everything else. People will be able to find it, I think, so.
Can I ask you?
Yeah.
What is the history of Kite Route Drive?
Kite Route. And Daryl, Daryl had that, and just, I specifically.
It's the railroad train that went, the train that went from Denver to Boulder, Superior. Marshall was, yeah, Marshall, Boulder.
It was basically the shape of the kite, and it was called Kite Route.
That was, that's what, that's the historical significance behind that.
I knew it at one time, I just didn't remember specifically. But that's, there is, you know, history to that. But my overall thing would be maybe not to, to overthink it too much because when you, when you're in other towns or other cities or Boston or wherever, do you really think about, they shouldn't have named it this way or the other? That, does this run into that street and is that weird? That would be my opinion.
Okay.
Thank you. And then you get some thoughts on Superior. Appreciate you taking the time to help us name the property, the project appropriately. There's a couple of points that I'd like to emphasize. One is that this street layout is in fact the approved street layout by the board. And all of these streets here are approved and exist, and there are no other alignments that are planned or proposed. To comment on the Trailway connection, one thing that is important.
That's good.
One thing that's being worked on right now is that Lewisville and CDOT and Centura and the town are, as your staff mentioned, are working on a connection across the thirty-six. It's very, very speculative. It's very expensive. It's thought about, it's something way out in the future. And at one point in time, as you know, there was this underpass here, and there was an alignment that would come through here to connect that underpass. CDOT has eliminated that underpass. Prior to eliminating it, there was a meeting with Lewisville and Superior and CDOT in their contract to see if any of the towns would put up money to construct something over here. And when that didn't happen, CDOT had to move forward. So what we've offered to do is to remove this road alignment that went through open space and to put an alignment here that would parallel the new pedestrian bridge, that you don't actually see here, but the pedestrian bridge is in this exact location. And so when I provided that information to Pam, the one thing that is for certain is that there is a pedestrian trail, there's a pedestrian bridge, and we would use that, because the bridge is coming through, we would connect up a trail from that pedestrian bridge over here to Promenade Drive. So the people driving by or walking by would say, oh, this, this connects up to that trail instead of, you know, how do you get there? I, I think it's valid. You know, if at some point in the future it looked like that connection was more real, and it's a very expensive connection, and there's very little money that's been identified, if that did happen, I think that would support making a change there. But as of now, what's there is, is the trail. And then just sort of separately, our preference is to, to really have the roads, the name be continuous until it turns. It does, it confuses addresses and, and it's a whole bunch of little things that we want the pedestrian and the visitor to, to enjoy. This turn of Discovery Parkway, you know, we're very open-minded to that. The only thought there was Discovery Parkway is a really well-known street, and it's expected to be more well-known as all these businesses up here, which will amount to, I think, three hundred thousand feet total. And we'd like them to make their way down to the park and connect up to the trails. We want pedestrian activity and things like that. But we're, we're very open-minded and I know the, there are other names that could be added here. So, you know, that's something that, that we would support. Other than that, I think, you know, roads don't have to be very long. I think if the name tells people what it does for that narrow, you know, segment, I think that's great. I mean, Main Street's not a Main Street forever. You know, there's narrow segments where it's a Main Street, and then it's no longer a Main Street. It's, there, this, there is no connection here between those roads. And then like here, Recreation Drive would turn, it actually, that would be the name of this street here. So it would be discontinuous. That road name will terminate there, whether it's Discovery Parkway or another name. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Just one question I do, what was the thought behind that, just continuing Coal Creek Drive or?
I'm assuming is there's another Coal Creek Drive in town up here.
Yeah, it's West Coal Creek Drive as it comes.
That down below, I'm sorry, that down below is called, is South Coal Creek. So there always should be a, yes.
The one by town hall.
Yeah.
This one, Pam pointed out, that's a South Coal Creek.
Okay. Pam pointed out that that was only an indication, if you notice there's an arrow on that, it was just an indication that Coal Creek Drive is down there. But some, I think that that should be changed to South Coal Creek Drive. And, you know, just trying to avoid confusion of different street names.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks for the additional information. I think that's helpful to have a little bit more background on what went into certain names like Trailway. That makes sense to me now. That's why it's named that. So I appreciate that. Okay, so I think our task is to come up with any recommendations, if we have any, and send them over to the board.
I would like to discuss this a little bit. I really think if we're going to change street names and terms, that we'd be consistent. This just feels really, after listening to Randy talk, I feel like we'd consider just naming that some other name, street, so that it kind of goes along with these. I know we have some other names. It just, it's different than everything else in towns. That's probably the only thing, I think, for me that's most important. I do like the naming, not the names that they've presented. I'm kind of okay with those.
Okay.
Do you have any thoughts?
I'm kind of fine with the names that are presented.
Okay. Would you, would you want to do the suggestion Bob had to change that piece of Discovery or, or no?
Yeah. Sure, it wasn't involved in that. If you have to then reconvene the task force picking out a name, you've got to hold a meeting on some means.
And I would imagine that trustees will have their own.
Yes, yes. It could happen, which is different direction, like Discovery Parkway, West or something like that, like that corner.
Or even like, when I had looked at it and I did the Longstreet Drive one way east, and then Longstreet Drive one way west on the other side, which is Village Green. I mean, you could pick a name like that. I mean, I'm not saying you have to pick that name, but it was just, on both sides there, they could have the same street name, it just one is east and one is west, or, or whatever direction they determine that to be. So that, that's a, or if it's going to be Village Green and we get Village Green east and west or whatever. But Village Green probably should be on those two little pieces on the side, probably too. I don't know.
Well, that's promenade though.
You know.
Promenade.
Yeah, it has to be promenade going one way, one, and then back the other way, the other way.
Carrie, you want to?
Carrie Nash, five forty Campbell Way, Superior. If you have, if you want us to come back with recommendations, because we do have a whole list, we're happy to do that. If on the Discovery Parkway, this one is in front of a preschool, we're happy to come back, give us back that task and we'll come back with additional names.
Okay. I don't think this needs to come back to the planning commission. So I would say bring those, perhaps have those available for the board because, but I don't think it's necessary for this to come back to the planning commission. But I appreciate that you have more names. Okay, I'm, I think one version of the street names proposed had been, you know, an east and west on those. And so I didn't like it that way. So I would support something different. I do get the idea of picking up Discovery from promenade, which will be going to remain thoroughfare. But I also understand the need to change names at sharp intersections. I would probably support changing that to something else.
The, the only comment I make about Recreation Drive, I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other about that. But I know there were some opinions given at the town board meetings about that. And that there were people there that did not want it to say Recreation Drive. They wanted to say something that meant Superior. So I just give that as feedback and comment, which I believe maybe if you weren't there, probably were at that meeting when that was said too. So Recreation Drive, that was specifically asked by some trustees to come up with a name that meant something about Superior, not just, because it doesn't mean anything, well, Superior. And then as far as the connection of Coal Creek Drive South, that was always intended to be at Avenue C. And it was even asked, I believe, at the last board meeting as well, to come up with other, take another look at it, ask staff to take another look at how to connect along closer to thirty-six. The roads that are actually plotted and documented and, and recorded are the ones that are in filing number one B. And they only go down up to Josephine Way, or what is being proposed as Josephine Way. So I think we can keep that in mind too, as we go through this. There's, will be some changes in these super lots four and five, which are around here and some of the other super lots that are in there as well. So those are my comments about Recreation Drive. I think you're going to get some pushback at the town board meeting. And also, the question was asked at the last board meeting to take another look at moving Coal Creek Drive connection up to Avenue C.
Okay. Okay. We have good lists of a couple of things.
Do you have consensus on these names? I've just been taking notes as far as generally. I mean, I think as far as consensus on examination of an additional option for the Discovery Parkway after it turns the corner. The only really clear comment that I've heard.
Okay.
One, I guess the questions are, one, are we okay with the meanings with the name scheme? We have anything we really are just against as a committee? That's probably one, because that's what's specifically being asked. And then are there any, you know, specific recommendations? And like I said, I agree with Lisa, that the only one that's sort of stood out is this Discovery Parkway corner. Whether we want to say something about that or not, if we have consensus.
Does anybody have any interest in conventions? By that, I mean, I'm not talking about the names, I'm talking about the suffixes. For example, Drives, Ways, wherever. But is there any interest in that one or not?
Drive versus Way versus Street versus Road.
The idea I have is then original Superior, north-south streets are avenues. And the east-west streets are streets essentially.
Wow.
And.
Looks like we have Way going.
Yeah, well, you can either, you can either get lost in that problem or not. But the north-south roads could be like Marshall Road. We wouldn't fool with that because that's what we're wanting in the town. But you would have Superior Drive, for example, would be, might be Superior Avenue because it generally goes north-south. But those, these conventions don't really hold in the rest of the town anyway, because we have Indiana Street in Rock Creek, which is generally a north-south street. So I don't know, it really doesn't matter what the town names or streets, how they either suffix them or whatever, it really ultimately doesn't matter. If there's any interest in trying to have a convention with that, we could discuss it, but it's not. I wouldn't bother.
Didn't they do it?
It looks like they did it.
They called them Drives, or moved them to Drives, north and south.
With the exception of Marshall Road, which you don't want to change, except for Discovery Parkway, which.
Not going to change.
Which is a.
Main Street.
Main Street is like, you know, in original Superior, it's generally east-west street. So that, I didn't know if there's any interest in that. But if there's not, well, no big deal.
I think that we leave it up to staff to try and make sure that there's some conformity where it's appropriate. But these are all small, length, streets. So a Way or a Drive sounds better to me than naming it some big name like Indiana Street or something like that, because that's a really long big street. It goes all the way from Way over there to Way over here.
Okay. Anyone else have any thoughts on the suffixes? Didn't even really occur to me, and I don't have a problem with it. It's done here. Okay. So back to Bob's comment about the general naming. How do we all feel generally about the naming that's proposed?
I don't know. I'm okay with what they, what's been presented.
I think that our discussion should be represented in what we forward on. The discussion about, generally, I'm okay with these street names too. I do think that we should recognize and acknowledge Recreation Drive may or possibly may change to a name that's specific to, more specific to Superior.
So on Recreation, why don't we take a poll, if we will, just on how this board feels? And I think that might be useful to pass along to them. And what they do with, what they do with it is what they do with it, but.
That's what I say. I think that if we just say that we had a discussion about it because it had been brought up by a town board, we don't have to tell them what we think should happen. because it had been brought up by a town board, we don't have to tell them what we think should happen, because they're gonna do what they wanna do.
Exactly, but what I'm... I guess what I'd like to pass on is two out of three, or five out of... How do we feel about Recreation Drive? So let's do a little straw poll on Recreation Drive. Those four.
I think it's the one. I think it's the only one that doesn't fit.
It doesn't hit.
I'd say Recreation Drive doesn't do much for me.
Well, that's what I... I mean, that's good. Did we?
We have your expression control. It didn't do much for you. I understood that, but that was terrifying.
Yes, after now that.
Recreation, I don't know.
Okay. Well, I think this was useful though, having this.
Sorry, there were two hands raised that liked it?
There was two that liked it, and the others were either neutral or opposed.
I'm not, I'm probably neutral.
Carrie has another thought.
Forty Campbell Way Superior. What about Town Center Drive? That was an option. Keep it in line with the Drives. Because we did Drives this way, try to do Ways this way.
Are you saying instead of Recreation?
Instead of Recreation Drive.
Town Center.
Town Center Drive.
No, that, no, that's a great idea. And I do think that I remember too, back when Luke presented Boulder Valley Ice, he, he wanted, he's, I think he put up one of the slides for Boulder Valley Ice, FDP, was, he wanted Boulder Valley Ice at number one Superior Way, or Superior Drive. You know, which would be a great, gives you your Superior and Boulder Valley Ice. So maybe the flip-flop of Superior Drive over to the, to the east, where Recreation Drive is, and then, what did you, Town Center Drive?
Town Center Drive.
Closer to the front, where it intersects with the roundabout, might be a good option too.
How do we feel about Superior Drive?
I'm fine with the new names. If we bring up Recreation, I'm not kinda...
I'm doing it for me, but I don't care.
I'm not putting it for you.
Town Center.
Recreation. Okay. Town Center.
I, I think that Boulder Valley Ice, if I was marketing Boulder Valley Ice, I'd rather have it Superior Way than Boulder Valley Ice at Superior Way, than Town Center Drive. You know, so that to me says more...
I kinda like Superior too.
Yeah, well, from a marketing perspective, and I do believe that if I remember sitting out there in the audience, that that's what he talked about, Luke did, when he presented the FDP to the town trustees.
I prefer Superior to Recreation.
Okay.
Okay. Seems like we're heading toward Superior. It'll be Drive though.
Right.
Yeah, not way, yeah. Just, they're trying to keep the Drives and Ways.
It's Drive on this side, so we just flipping it over to the other side. You're basically just taking Superior Drive.
Yes, Superior Drive.
Dump, dropping it over there.
I think it's just Superior.
Well, that one, that's what Carrie mentioned, is Town Center.
So is there consensus on the planning commission for that recommendation, or?
All right. I like Superior Drive.
Okay, yeah, Superior Drive in place of Recreation Drive, and then whatever the first.
Whatever.
Something else.
A new option for?
New option for, very cool.
Yeah. Another option, here we go.
Carrie Nash. All right, Superior Drive, the very front one right here. The reason that we put the very first street as they came into Town Centers to remind them they're in Superior. So that was the other side of that. Yeah, I know, but it's just in line.
Hey, I think that'll...
Center, oh, can you imagine the meetings that we had?
Isn't that big bright lights over the top that says Sparkle is Superior?
That's gonna be a dome.
We're on a dome.
I do think when this goes to the town board, I think someone from the naming committee should do a brief presentation to the town board, just so that they understand where, you know, just so they understand the background for where you came from, from some of the suggestions to them, that it was useful to us, and I think that would, I think that'd be a useful opening to them.
I think you still like Superior Drive.
I do. I do.
I was gonna ask you about that, Mom?
Okay.
That's why I think we should make a list of comments and then just...
Yeah, yeah, exactly, please it is.
Okay, so you add to that comment that said, some still like the idea of Superior Drive, but that's an option is to do that.
So I, I have that all have recommended that Superior Drive be used in place of Recreation Drive? Because it looked like there was some hiccups on that.
No, 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 that's, that's what I'm saying. We're beginning to, either send all the comments...
Well, they'll, we'll get them, and Carrie will get them.
Maybe we should just give them the minutes, yes.
So they'll get the minutes in the video, but...
No, but I think we, I think we should send them a summary, because that's what they're, they're not wanting minutes. I think they're wanting a list, a list of recommendations.
Be my comments. So what we're making here is comments. I believe that was what.
Comments, but I'd like to give them a couple of bullet point, bullet points, so that...
Well, I don't mean, I think we should probably just put our hands up on any of these kind of things, if it's, you know...
So not all recommend.
So Recreation replaced by Superior Drive.
Okay.
Okay, everyone with a fella's.
Yeah.
Five out of six. Five out of six.
Okay.
And then, the other comment was Discovery Parkway by the Village Green.
Coming up with different. I think we can just separate Parkway, East and West. Changing that name. Where are we on that?
Let's do a hand raise.
Do we?
Yeah.
Hand raise for change it.
Change the name, there's no name, but change it?
Yeah, so use one of your names.
Yeah.
So everyone.
All recommendations, just...
unanimous on changing the name. They're doing a good job. I like it.
And each, the other side would be the same name, just in the other direction, the one way? Is that what we're seeing? Discovery Parkway.
Well, I think that's a separate question, so that's, that's... Village Green, east-west, is that, is that kind of what we're...
I think it was Discovery Parkway, east-west, and then it, and then it got put up.
I think the question ought to be is, should those two street names on either side of Village Green be the same name, east and west? Or then whenever scheme they decide. So same name up with the street name that we've put real, so...
Yeah, I think that would be more logical, Bob. And Randy pointed out to us that the addresses are gonna be odd on one street and even on the other, because the Village Green is in the middle, so it won't have an address. You understand what I mean? And that's one ways there anyway, so...
Are there actually, is there anything facing?
And they would just, unless they're on the odds, either on the odd or even side of the street. In other words... In other words, residences or businesses wherever are, are on what would normally, you gotta split street. So you've got the odd.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Are there, are there buildings that actually face that would be addressed on these?
They could.
Roads, that was my question.
Right, and they could be on the, facing the east-west direction also.
That's correct. On these streets, we would expect to have buildings facing on both sides of the streets, on either of them. So if they're the same name, it would make it very confusing. Because just the only thing difference would be an E or a W at the end of the name. Whereas on this street, there'll only be addresses facing one side that would be odd. And on this side, there'll only be addresses facing the other side that are, that are even. So that's how, you know, Promenade Drive won't create any confusion. But over here, somebody pointed out that originally there was a concept where these might have the same name, east and west, and... I actually didn't, that was my idea, but somebody else pointed that issue out. And I think this street name will pass through. If it's like this, it's okay.
Okay, so that, that's a, that's a great point. And it is, I did see it, I think in the presentation Randy before, so... Then those two streets in one direction, the one directional streets could be named something. That left up to the committee again to come up with a name or recommendation to the town.
So I think whether maybe only then is that we would recommend the Discovery Parkway, but this not be Discovery Parkway. That's our, that's our only recommendation.
Right.
Yes. And we have that, was that unanimous?
Yes.
Okay, were there other, other items that can arose to the level of being at least a majority? We've got a couple other.
Well, the Coal Creek connection to us being in that, that's not a firm, you know, up through the, up there. So that could conceivably change that Kite Route Drive name to Coal Creek.
This is, I'm pretty sure this is all fixed, that this has all been approved through to here.
Well, you can look at it right here, where it's been approved to, it's right to there. So on the, on the FDP, by the number one B. But, so the question though is, I like that Kite Route Drive, but you know, it's kind of unusual and it's something special to us. So I'd like to be able to retain that someplace within the Superior Town Center if possible. But I don't know where that would be for sure.
I don't know where it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess it could, and then it doesn't have to be, we don't have to make it Coal Creek, because that's ends over there, we may never make the connection to Coal Creek anyway. So, across that other property, so that's, that's a, that's a very good point. We could just, I like Kite Route. I didn't know what it meant, and I appreciate your explaining it, but it was very interesting.
Yes.
It's a very unique name.
First, yes. Okay.
I did have a couple of comments from some people though, wanting to try and put some names of people that had, other than Josephine, in addition to, I should say, in addition to Josephine and Emmeline, some of the people that had owned the property here, like George Menkeck or, or others. But it's kinda hard, I think, to try and come up with last names in street names too sometimes. So particularly when we're doing more of a, a location like Bullner Drive or Kite Route Drive. And then first names, so...
Pam pointed out, there's multiple, there's been multiple owners, and so where do you, where do you start and where do you stop with, with owner's names? And there will be other opportunities for part, you know, park benches and park features and things that need names, and that could be incorporated. Other names could be incorporated.
Fields.
Fields.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
That is sad. But the Kite Route, I mean, the Kite, like, doesn't, Route, so like, using double street reference, like, you have the street or, Court Drive or something, that, that, to me, seems like a separate, you know, itself, coming out of that Kite Route.
Well, it's Kite Route though, as you described, a rail route.
That is.
Let's change that.
If you wanna maintain Ways, including one direction, perhaps we can kind of understand why, and then probably just, the Kite by itself, the end of the connection.
Just rail day street suffix. I've never seen it.
I've never seen it in the world. My opinion would be you risk, you risk losing the historical context, because Route would then probably be abbreviated and not, you know, so, I mean...
That's true.
Yeah, I'd say, yeah, but take it away and lose that historical context, I think. Kite Route just has, I mean, it's...
That's fine.
Yeah, it's fine. Yeah, I hear you, I hear you. I mean, I, yeah, I haven't really thought about that now, but I'm even the rest of us.
I think that would be interesting, you have a business and then your address be Kite Route Drive. It's Superior.
Pretty cool.
Okay, are there any other comments that we wanna pass along? Okay.
So to summarize, I believe we have three. As far as using the street name of Recreation Drive, two liked it, the remainder were neutral or opposed. The second would be that five were in favor of using the name Superior Drive in place of Recreation Drive. And then the final one was Discovery Parkway. After it turns the corner near the pre-K site, should be a new option to be determined. The remainder of the discussion, we'll note that there was great discussion and the plan ever included in the meeting video in the minutes. Does that sound acceptable?
Can we also indicate where the Trail Way will go between those two buildings up to the access, the road, street where it needs to easement? Didn't you say, Randy, that you were in favor or you were gonna do that? Show Street Seven, which is now named Trail Way, connecting up to, or the possibility of it to be connected up to the potential bridge across 36 to Campus Drive?
Yes, our revised PD amendment number two that's going to board on the 27th will show dash lines for a future easement in that location.
And then that would still be Trail Way if it, if it went through there? If the road actually got placed there, that would be named Trail Way?
That could also be named Campus Drive on the other side.
But if you already have Trail Way there, wouldn't that be confusing?
Campus Drive on the other side, I mean, so...
Yeah.
It could just be, I don't know, there'd have to be an argument between some, there was no time now.
Okay.
Some else wants to add.
That's fine. Thank you.
If one other comment, I wanna make sure we get in line. Actually, I think we make sure in line is spelled correctly.
Okay, and Superior Plaza Way. I think we should note that too, that that's also another Superior Plaza Way name. It's just on the outside edge of the Superior Town Center, but I think we should note that we recognize that there's also a Superior Plaza Way.
There is there Superior, I'm sorry.
It's in front, it, it goes past Brakes Plus, Superior Plaza.
Oh, not Superior Plaza Way, okay.
Yeah. And then the other, the other, well, I don't know, we don't do anything about that now, but access to the cemetery is gonna have to be another discussion. Some highway to have access to cemetery.
Are there, isn't that trail represented there?
That's a trail. No, 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 that's not a trail, that's an irrigation ditch, right away. That's an irrigation right away road.
So there's no access to the cemetery?
Nope.
Anywhere? Is that true?
Well, the cemetery access is more, would be discussed in the FDP stuff.
Okay, getting clearer. All right.
But probably there is now, now that the underpass has been filled in.
Okay, but that's forthcoming in the FDP.
Yeah.
So we'll have Jeff talk about that then.
Okay, were there any public comments? Okay.
Very generous, public comment.
Well, you know, we're so busy tonight.
I'm used to working till 10 o'clock, I mean. Karen, I got 5:55 South Mass. I just wanted to, and you probably got this in your notes, but we, we spent a lot of time trying to figure out if you were gonna order a pizza, or if you were gonna have your business name something, what would it, and I apologize I was late, if that's already been reiterated, but in talking to Fred's comments about Ways and whatnot, we tried to make, if it's gonna be Promenade, we didn't want it to be Promenade Boulevard, that's too bulky. So we tried to make, if it's Josephine or Emmeline, then it was short and it was a Way. And so those were some of the concepts, but also thinking about what your address would be if you were a resident. How easy is it going to be? And also if you're showing property. How many Discovery Parkways do you need? And also, it's not uncommon, have a street going one way being named one thing, and a street turning off and being named something else. It's not all that uncommon. The thing I would really worry about with being have Old Railway Court Drive and Circle, or east, you know, 49 different iterations of that. So that's just some additional, and, and, you know, repeating myself, I apologize. But we tried to really think about and try to keep not going into birds and trees, and trying to keep as historical concept going here, as well as things that were meaningful to what, what was, were the activities of the actual areas that we were naming, so...
Good, thank you. I think you guys did a great job. By the way, I think it looks awesome.
Hello, Pamela Lehman with Ranch Capital. My understanding you were asking about Emmeline and Josephine, and I did. Emmeline is Emmeline Hake, who, forgetting her husband's first name, because we were focused on the women. And they were the founding people of Superior, and that's why she was included. Josephine Roche is actually a very fascinating character, who, she, her family was from here, and then she went back out east to college, I mean, we're talking early 1900s. And then actually came back here and became president of the mining company that ran all the mines in this area. So that's why we included Josephine. Oh, thank you. And the spelling, you know, it's because originally I had it on here as E-M-M-A. And then I went back into the history, and it was spelled this way.
I know, which is correct. Because the original history book was done first with E-M-M-A, and then the last history book.
And I guess me, I'm looking at the same stuff, so, yeah, everything on...
And I'm trying to call the person who did that first history book and see if she knows how she got that spelling. how she got that spelling, so I'm working on it.
Did she die here in Boulder County?
I would assume, yes.
We should be able to find it in public records and the correct spelling.
Okay. You want to go back through the list again, just to.
Sure, so we have five comments now. Recreation Drive, the use of the name Recreation Drive, two liked, the remainder were close to neutral. Five were in favor of using Superior Drive in place of Recreation Drive. Discovery Parkway, after it turns the corner near the preschool site, should be a new option to be determined. Confirm the spelling of Emmeline, and an acknowledgement that Superior Plaza Way already exists in town.
Okay.
I just, one other comment, I think that we may need a replacement of Discovery Parkway. It's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be.
I'll add, a new option. To be recommended by the.
Yes. Okay, anything else? All right, we'll move on to staff announcements.
At this time, we have no real announcements, other than on June 10th, as you determined, we will be continuing the public hearing for the final development plans and final class contingent upon how the town board action occurs on this coming Tuesday, May 27th, for the planned development amendments that receive those. That's all we have.
Okay, any other commission anything? All right, for Josh.